All we need to order is your eyes to the left. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Good evening everyone and welcome back. I hope you're having a good summer because I was corrected tonight, summer's not over yet. We will start with the consent agenda. Mr. Hood.
Motion to approve consent agenda, Mr. Hood.
For second? Mrs. Bush? Second. And I want to call it Mrs. Arndt.
Please put the words D and item H.
I'm sorry, which one was it?
D and E.
Want you to say any also?
Please.
I would like to put item R. Okay, so all those in favor approving A, B, C, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q. And Mrs. Bush. And now it's time for item D.
I'm just curious about at what point we have to be concerned about, I don't know if we use the right word, but when we pour resources into one place, I'm just wondering when that becomes something we pay attention to.
I would echo your concerns that at this point, this is the only school that's eligible for this type of a grant. So I think in Central Office, our feeling was to, since it was a grant for fresh fruit and vegetables, that it would be certainly, we wouldn't want to prevent the children from getting fresh fruits and vegetables.
Wouldn't want to prevent, no, Dr. Conley, but providing an opportunity in one place and not another is really what I'm talking about. I understand what you're saying about Maple Street is the only school that qualifies. I'm just wondering when we need to pay attention to that, that's all. You're telling me it's not one of those circumstances?
Any other way to motion on this? I'm sorry, Mrs. Bush. Mr. Abgest is here who would like you to discuss this. Do you want to say anything to this?
Yeah, Maple Street School was the only school that qualified, but with the company that we're going to be dealing with to provide the snacks for Maple Street, we were also able to negotiate a price to provide the same fruits and vegetables to the other elementary schools as part of the trade line. So we're able to expand the variety of fresh fruits and vegetables that we're offering to all the elementary schools based upon receiving this grant. The other schools aren't, won't be funded through the grant, they'll be funded through the usual reimbursements that we get, but we're able to negotiate a much better price to allow us to do that. So it did enhance some benefit every elementary school. It is Maple Street that will receive a majority of it through the grant funding.
So all of the grant money will be spent at Maple Street School?
Correct.
And that frees up funding to apply to the other schools for fresh?
It allows you to negotiate a better price with the vendor to receive the same products in the other schools. Otherwise, it would have been out of our price range in order to do that.
So in other words, all the elementary schools will be getting the same fruits and vegetables?
As a trade line item where at Maple Street School, we're part of the snack program.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Hood? And then I can motion on this? Mrs. Bush?
I motion that we approve consent agenda D.
For second? Just a question. All those in favor? Thank you.
Mrs. Arndt, I believe. I just had two questions. Credit, the ability to receive credit for missed gym classes, and then the information regarding field trips. About my curiosity, why do we do field trips and lunches for those students?
Look it up, Ms. Philly, I'm just here and she's, she wrote the grant.
Are field trips and lunches for students participating in a summer program, they're not for the regular students?
Oh, I know that. No, that's what it says. I'm wondering why these 12 students that we're trying to capture over the summer through yoga and whatever are now, we're funding, the grant is funding field trips and lunches for those students. What kind of field trips?
They do, so we do have activities this year. I believe we did, we did a garden chores, they did a private field trip.
Are field trips a requirement of the grant? Then I'm wondering if the idea is to recapture these students and give them credit for missed gym classes, have them engage with other students from the high school and administrators and teachers at the high school. I'm not understanding why $600 would be devoted to field trip.
As part of the grant, bringing these kids connected to the school.
We worked with, we worked with, social workers, like I would say, administration of the school, if they like our program, they would ask for it.
Any other questions? So you want to make a motion on this? Mrs. Bush?
I make a motion that we accept consent agenda E.
For second? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Mr. Ledger. I'll go back to tell everybody that we're not being videotaped tonight, only audio. We were just wanting to tell everybody that we're not on camera tonight. And the last item is item R, and I just wanted to make one small change on that policy. In the third paragraph, it says not later than July 1st, 2013. That should be included, this is here, we passed July 1st, 2013. Mr. Hood?
Motion to approve, item 1.1 R, we got.
For second? Mr. Clinton? Any discussion? Mrs. Arndt?
You're suggesting that there should be no dig in here?
Right.
So it should just be the board will provide written notification?
Right. Any other questions on that? There's a motion on the floor to approve that, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, now we'll move on to item 2.0, Secretary Report. Opportunity for the Board of Education to add or delete agenda items. Mr. Hood?
With the 6.3 A, that would be the, I'm sorry, 6.2 A. Vernon Elementary name change.
And there's a yellow item in everybody's folder.
For second on that? Mrs. Bush?
Second.
Any discussion on that? They're all good? Yes. Any other additions or deletions to that?
Mrs. Arndt? I want to re-press this item. An update on the ADHAC committee report, just an update.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? I think we have that, that's 6.2B, update on that. Okay. Any other additions or, oh, Mrs. Hood?
In the June 23rd minutes that were in our packet, there was a question about the Futures Report and your comment that time is that we would add it at the August meeting and I don't see it on this, on this agenda.
I didn't see, think of it till I said 10 minutes and it was too late. In the information. Okay, Dr. Conley. Is it in the, that's right. The information only is an answer to that. It's the question. Copy of email, Dr. Conley sent? Is that in the back?
I'd like to move to add that discussion as item 6.2C.
Would be the Futures bidding, is that interesting?
Yeah.
There's a second? There is no second on that. Okay. Any other additions or deletions? Okay, we'll move to item 2.2, Ravel High Student Representatives.
Hello, I hope you all enjoyed your summer. And I think we're all pretty excited to be going back to school where there's all the fame and excitement and covered over despair. Because it always hits you hard first day, but I know things have been going fairly well with band, sports, they've been out there training hard, getting ready for the season's coming up. And I do think this is going to be a good year. I think the trends with the school, with the new administration and the new feeling is that, I think things are going to be more positive. Last year, I noted that it felt a bit more school spirit, more positivity, or positive energy in the school. And I hope the trend continues. I guess we'll find out, but I think it will. That's really about all I have to say now and we have to start school again, so I guess we'll see what happens on Thursday.
Thank you. Keep us updated on the school politics. Okay, item 3.0, Community Forum. Opportunity for comments on agenda items, potential future agenda items, or general information provided to the board from citizens and community organizations. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? And we'll move on to item 4.0, Personnel. 4.1, Introduction of our Vernon Elementary School Principal, Jack Middleton. Dr. Conley?
Thank you very much. For members, if you recall, there was a special meeting in July where we asked you to name the new principal of Vernon Elementary School. And we chose unanimously Jack Juan Middleton. And she is coming from Columbia. She was not available at that time, so I would ask Jackie if you would come up to the microphone just in case there are any questions. She was Director of Student Services in Columbia. Prior to that, the Assistant Director of People's Services in Killingley, Special Education Teacher in Hartford, and also Police Officer in Hartford. She has a bachelor's degree from University of Connecticut in Human Development and Family Relations, a master's degree from the University of Hartford in Special Education, and a sixth year degree from University of Connecticut in Educational Leadership. So we, we welcome her. She's been on board for about a week and a half, I think, as an assistant in the hall, and jumped right in because our students had some extended year programming, and so she got to meet most of the students right away. She's here for any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Well, welcome. We're very happy you've joined us. You're welcome.
Thank you, just, uh, a plug for our-
You're going to speak into the microphone because of the audio.
Just wanted to let everyone know that the staff so far for Vernon Elementary School have been wonderful. They're a great group and they've helped with the transition to make things as smoothly as they can being someone who's in the district. So just wanted them to get a knowledge of that. And thank you all for having me.
Thank you, welcome. Move on to item 4.2, Confirmation and Appointment of .45 FTE Special Education Supervisor, Todd Giannsanti.
Thank you. We completed our interviews for the .45, so just under half time, Special Education Supervisor, and chose internally Mr. Todd Giannsanti, who is a school counselor at Vernon Center Middle School. At that point, I had asked permission to appoint him on an interim basis because the board was not meeting again until this evening. So he is here and he would welcome any questions from the board. He has spent his entire career at this conference, thank you, at Vernon Center Middle School as a school counselor. He has a bachelor's degree in sociology from Central, a master's degree in school counseling from the University of St. Joseph, and a sixth year in educational administration and supervision from the University of Bridgeport. And he is dedicated to our students and has already hit the ground on the interim basis, obviously, but has been working very hard all summer, since the end of July.
Anybody have any questions?
I just have one logistical question. Where, I'm going to be at the middle school for .55, where am I going to be located for the .45 position?
I just wondered if the .45 leaves down the center for middle school?
Yes, it does. They are down now to 3.55 school counselors. However, they do have a school population that's in the 600s, so that still leaves the ratio, quite a nice ratio of counselors to students.
Nobody else have any questions? Is this going to make a motion?
I make a motion that the Board of prefer the appointment of Todd-
Giannsanti.
Giannsanti. To the position of .45 Special Education Supervisor.
For second? Second. Discussion and comments? All in favor? Thank you very much, you're welcome. Your job in Vernon. Move on to 4.3, Leave of Absence Requests. Executive Session Anticipate?
There are four leave of absence requests from various staff members, all for reasons that would be personal for each staff member. So we did identify the students, excuse me, the students, the teachers that you would possibly entertain your conversation in executive session to protect their privacy, their personal lives, and none of them requested that you have the conversation in open session. So that is, it's the board's perspective we're interested in.
I suggested if we're going to use executive session, that we do our other business and then add that on to the executive session. It doesn't seem appropriate to people who are waiting for other agenda items.
I'll second that motion.
So we'll move that to item 6.6, so we'll just basically say that with 4.3, we'll be done after an executive session. There's a motion and a second all in favor of that? Okay, now we'll move on to item 5.0, Curriculum. 5.1, New Textbook Adoption. I think the Curriculum Committee has just met?
The Curriculum Committee met today and we were shown the new textbook for the Global Studies Program, which is going to take place of our Grade 9, was it U.S. History? World史? World史? Right. And we were able to see it, it is a 2015 edition, which is newest and most up to date, but it is available to us now. We would be purchasing the books at list price, but with that list price, we're also going to be getting the e versions of the book, all the teacher materials we need, including the intervention or the- Differentiation, can't give it out today. So even though we are paying for the textbooks, we're only paying for three class sets, so 90 books. The books, from what I understand, will be staying in the classrooms and the students will be able to access the texts on computers and on Chromebooks that will be in carts available to the students within the classroom as well. The reason that we are kind of hurrying on this a little bit is because the course has been approved last year, but the book was chosen towards the end of the year and we did not get it approved within our last meeting. So we're looking to get it approved now. We might need to waive the usual protocol of having it on display for a certain amount of time, two weeks, just so we can get it in the hands of the students within about 10 days, hopefully. Until that time, they have made arrangements to work within the old curriculum or to be able to access the e-books immediately, as soon as the purchase order gets filed, so that they can have access to it right away. And through the Curriculum Committee, we did review it and ask questions, and we did decide that this would be something we'd like to adopt this book.
So normally, our procedure is to have the textbooks brought before the board, have one meeting, and then approve to the next meeting. But because we would like to get it in the hands of the students sooner rather than later, I would ask that I was interested in making a motion to waive our usual procedure for this purchase.
I make a motion that we waive the two week requirement based on the recommendation from the committee.
Is there a second on that question? Mrs. Bush?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Mr. Hood?
As mentioned, the books are going to remain in the classroom and the textbook will also be available on Chromebooks. All the student will be able to access it in the state for tests or exam.
I can speak to that. Meeting Board, Jonathan Graham, Social Affairs Chair, Rockville High School. The e version will be able to be accessed through any type of media, whether it be the library, the Chromebooks, at home. Each student will have a login password in order to be able to access those online materials to include the student edition of the textbook in one of the tab pages. Gave a sample of some of the things that they'll be able to do online, such as quizzes, other support materials that they're, you can assign to the teacher plus.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to waive our usual procedure for approving textbooks. All those in favor? And now we're going to need a motion to approve the purchase of these textbooks. Mrs. Bush?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve purchase of the Global Studies textbooks.
Is there a second? Mr. Hood? Any discussion? Mr. Hood?
I'd like to ask that my business manager, there was reference, and in the document here is also Laura indicated that we will be purchasing at list price, which I just don't understand why we would be paying this price. We don't normally do that, especially because there's an additional cost of $5 a book just for shipping home, which I think is a very high price just to ship each book. So could you please, given the amount of business that we throw to the raw hill, address that particular level?
Good to hear. Turn to Mr. Burton, of his involvement in purchasing process.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Kemp. This time, having gone through this process in my previous district looking for types of textbooks like this, as well as looking for online versions, I can tell you that as an end of our assessment piece to any textbook, in most cases, most vendors will charge between $40 and $65 for that online access. So if you can imagine 90 times that, 30 to 60 dollars in addition to the list price for the textbook. So in essence, we're getting an entirely digitized version of this, including, from my understanding, additional materials that are going to be beneficial to our students at essentially no cost. So the list price, yes, you can sometimes negotiate that to 10% better. I've experienced that myself in my role as Department Chair. That is, typically then you negotiate prices for other, the support materials for the classroom, and then if you want the online materials, electronic materials, that'd be an additional cost as well. In terms of shipping, I've experienced personally, anywhere between 5 and 10% of the textbook costs for shipping.
Well, possibly in your explanation of what was being paid for, I would be clear because I think anyone would raise the question, why would we pay any expense without an explanation here so that we would have to have this conversation?
I'll take note, that would be my fault when I filled out the form. I'll take note of that and pass that along to the other chairs as they make their presentations as well. The total dollar amount that we did receive, Mr. Kemp, that was, I negotiated for free, was about $1,000 worth of materials that we got. So I'll make note of that in the future when we make research presentations.
Mr. Hood?
Just relating to the electronic copies, is there any limitations on the number of electronic copies or number of IDs that we can provide students on?
The ID is actually going to reside with the teacher and the students will be using the teacher identification numbers that we have.
So there's no limitation on how many students-
It would appear that way, that there's no limitation, that each of the teacher will have their login ID that will be able to be used through, for the students. Which, there's three teachers that are teaching this course.
Any other questions? I'll make a motion on the floor to approve the purchase of these textbooks. All those in favor? Mr. Manes. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to item 5.2, which is the approval of the teacher evaluation pen. Thank you, Mrs. Schetrone. Last year, probably before this time, the board received probably the CEED documents, which is the State Educator Evaluation Document, Educator Evaluation and Development. And so the town or the district pretty much followed that document that was created by the state. Over the course of this past year, the Teacher Evaluation and Professional Learning Committee reviewed all of the data, reviewed how the process was going, and made several, several, no, more than several, tweaks to that. We found that the calculus or the mathematics involved did not rate teachers the same way that we were rating teachers, and so we didn't think it was fair all the way around. You do have a one-page summary in your yellow folders there, and I think Mr. Burton turns over to Mr. Burton, he's chair of that committee, and you can go.
Thank you very much, Dr. Conley. I'll give you a little bit more detail of the process. As we went through the first year of the CEED plan, came evident through the features and administrators that it was cumbersome, it was confusing, and in many's opinion, it didn't actually get to the point that we needed to get to. This was really, you know, helping teachers grow and ensuring that we have accountability for those teachers to make sure that they're helping the students grow. Through discussion with, you can see the committee is on the second page of that document, the full plan. Through lengthy discussion through January, through April, we determined that we didn't like the CEED plan. We didn't like the way the different elements to it that really didn't seem to work. There was a lot of confusion, specifically the end of the school year, with the calculus, with the- with the formulas they use. And it was evident through our eyes, through administrator's eyes, that it was heavily weighted towards success. I can give you some specific examples. In our district, two-thirds of our teachers were rated proficient and one-third were rated at exemplary, with no teachers rated at developing or below standard. And that, and just through discussion with the administrators, there were some folks who probably were rated higher than they should have been, given if it was their older plan or if it were a newer plan. Looking at the old plan, we said that there are some pieces that we want to continue, there are some pieces that we have to continue through state legislation, and there's other pieces that we're asking to waive. And to give you the quick version of it, essentially, you're rated in five areas in our plan. It's, that's it. There's four domains on a new rubric. The rubric came up in the state. Originally had five domains on the rubric to evaluate teachers, now there's four. And then the fifth element is the SLO or the Student Learning Objectives, and those are the objectives set by the teachers for their students, and they have to have very specific indicators under those objectives for their students to show progress over time. We've accepted the state's allowance for us to waive having two SLOs. We've chosen to have one as a minimum. Teachers can have one of the one SLO. Through discussion with teachers, they felt it was better to focus in on one area, the needs of their students. And we've also said that that is going to be just an important point of the state that has to be one of the areas that they have to pass. If you look under the definition rules for effective, we actually provided some areas of growth for our teachers, specifically for new teachers, year-one teachers into the district. They must basically pass three of the five areas. Year-two teachers must pass four of the five areas. And anybody three years or more veteran must pass all five of the areas. Now, that seems particularly harsh. You're going to say, well, wait a second, there's no growth there, but there's a lot of growth available within the plan. Within specific domain, for instance, domain one, the classroom environment, student education committee, learning, there's three indicators in there. And there you can essentially, in that area, one of those indicators can be rated developing and the other areas can be rated proficient. You'd still be summarily rated as proficient in that area. The other piece to it is that this is still relatively subjective up to administrators. So if a teacher, even a veteran teacher, let's say at this time of year, September, October, is showing some areas in need of growth and they're rated developing, below standard, but they've made significant progress by May, then you would weight them towards that progress. You would say they're developing, they're proficient or exemplary. So we are encouraging our administrators to have those conversations with teachers to say, okay, what are those areas in need of growth and how can we support you and how can we help develop you over time? And finally, you know, we want to ensure that our students are growing. Our SLO rubric has been changed to one that is developing as well, whereas before the rating was, you set a goal and did your students make it? Now, part of that process is, are you really being reflective in that? Are you really looking at the data for your students? Are you showing a portfolio of growth rather than, say, one indicator? And that also was allowed by the state, which I think was much better than just to use one indicator, one assessment. So again, through conversations between teachers and administrators, they're showing, yes, you know, we're really struggling with this group of students. We set high standards, but they're just not making progress. Okay, midterm, we'll make some adjustments, we'll try a different assessment, we'll try different ways of reaching the students, and we're showing the growth. And again, that's a judgment call to say, yes, we're really trying to grow students, as opposed to, here's the goal, black and white, did you pass? So there's lots of opportunity for growth. And the final area is if a veteran teacher, for instance, is rated below effective or four out of five areas, proficient, one in developing, they would be placed into an appraisal cycle. That's the whole next year, which is another opportunity for them to grow and reach those proficiency levels in all five domains. And that's going to have a support plan, they're going to have a secondary evaluator, and a lot of support along the way. So overall, we feel as a committee that this was a good plan, and we meet the needs of teachers and we meet the needs of our students. In discussion with the state, this did go out to the commissioner for discussion a number of times because it was off the radar a little bit. They like it because it's clear and we still are holding teachers accountable, but it's allowed for growth. And combined with that, one of the things that we instituted this year is a new teacher academy to support our new teachers. And it's been in parallel, the evaluation plan, saying the first area that we're going to be looking for is classroom management, essentially. We're going to have new teacher academy every month, and we're going to focus in on classroom development, on classroom management. Second half of the year is going to be instruction, that's what the plan's going to focus in on. So when the teacher, when the administrator goes in in the spring, they're going to look for instructional techniques specific to domain three, and our new teacher academy will be supporting that. In addition, team, which is the state-based support for new teachers, also parallels that. Module one, this fall, is on classroom management. Module two is for planning and instruction. So we see a parallel support structures for our new teachers over two years. So we really feel through that and working with the team, working with administrators, working with the teacher union, that this is a very good plan and it's fully endorsed across the district. Thank you.
For the more veteran teachers' SLOs, are they going to have to focus more on literacy and numeracy for their SLOs, or is it pretty much their choice on where they want to focus?
SLOs are going to be developed as they were this year in conjunction with their teams. So we expect all third-grade teachers at Northeast to work together to develop the SLOs based on the data that they're getting from second grade. So if an area of literacy is very good, for instance, for that group of children, they would move into numeracy. It's also in a parallel of the school improvement plans and the school goals and district goals. So we've set for to continue along with reading goals for K through three, and we would expect those grades to follow that as well, as well as the schools.
Is there any other questions? Mr. Kent?
On page six, there's a reference to terminology and all that familiar with in the, under item one, under rating, towards the bottom of the paragraph. It says for the school year, the ratings will not be refined based on CSD, standardized assessment. Could you please explain what does "will not be refined"? I don't know what to refer to.
That's more language for the state, really. It says, what that means is in the CEED plan, when state assessment data is available, and typically in years past, you know, for instance, we're just getting CMT science data in the past week. So if part of your SLO was based on CMT, you know, the old CMT, old cap, the plan, according to CEED, said that we're going to give you a, basically, we're going to give you a judgment in June, but we can make adjustments to that up through the end of the summer, whenever that state assessment data is available. The state, in essence, this is probably what the state is saying, we're not sure when that data's going to be available. You know, we did the first iteration of S back to this past spring, but again, that's not going to be student-level information, it's more global at school, district level. Next year is the first iteration, it's the student level, so they're saying perhaps that's not reliable data, it's still unfamiliar, so we're not going to be using that to adjust teacher ratings after the end of the school year or the sentence of the June first deadline date for our teachers.
Also on page six, it refers to Vernon Public Schools. It says, BPS may decide to use secondary observers. I find that curious. We had talked in the past about additional administrative hours being necessary to get the workload done, and that the state was going to allow systems to bring into it administrative support from outside the system, and that we were not in favor of that. That if there were to be additional observation hours, that it would be done by Vernon staff members only. And I'm concerned about the language here that says Vernon will, I don't remember the exact location here, but the language says Vernon may decide, may decide, to use secondary observers. So I'd like you to tell me where these observers were coming from, please.
As you can see, the next sentence, secondary observers are certified administrators or fully trained evaluators. The intent of this is to be Vernon administrators.
Okay, it doesn't say that in this document.
Okay.
And that's a huge omission, as far as I'm concerned. I realize the state felt that, well, to solve this problem, we'll allow the towns to bring in people from the outside. And that may be okay with the state elsewhere, but it's, in my opinion, it's not okay here. So I don't know if we're going to be voting on the exact language or ask to approve the exact language in this document here.
There's a suggested change. Do you think they made a suggested change?
Well, I'm making a suggested change and that it be clear in the language that these be Vernon staff. I don't really care how you relate it, but I want the final document to reflect that, please.
Could it just say secondary observers are certified Vernon administrators?
As simple as that, that they be Vernon people. What I don't, I need to clear what I'd rather we not be doing. And if you would please, on page eleven, there's a reference to a teacher's focus area. And that's on the, basically, the third paragraph on page eleven, first line. Teachers will build one performance and practice focus area, that is a line, so. I'd like to understand, who will be choosing the focus area? Is that totally the option of the staff member, or is that to be directed by the administrator to be the person to evaluate what that focus area?
I'd rather say it's more of a conversation during the goal-setting process that you're going to take a look at your veteran teacher here, or this is your second and third year, you're going to take a look at previous year's evaluations and what are the areas in need of growth, and then you're going to tie that to our strategy for improvement. It's one of those areas which we have a separate document that shows the alignment between the strategy for improvement and the indicators of the CCT. So that's an ongoing conversation between administrator and a teacher to say, I really think I need to grow in the area of using the power of peers. And that'll be part of the conversation as they go forward, when they have their observations, when they have the mid-year conference, and they have the end-of-year conference, you know, in terms of area of growth. With the plan eventually, once we get through this year, is we're going to start tying PD specifically to some of these areas of growth. In other words, in your building, there might be five teachers all in the same focus area. We can then start customizing some of that professional development associated to that focus area. That's a goal. It's a lofty goal as it begin to a very granular level of that, but I think it's a noble goal.
Thank you. And finally, the concern that this board discussed by the time when we saw the results in four different quadrants, when everybody basically came down and tore them, and the explanation was, well, that there was rounding up going on. And that, as you pointed out, Mr. Bird, when you went to the state, you apparently explained the difficulty that that presents. But I don't see any language changes in this document. I read very carefully, looking for some statement here that prohibits rounding up. So I would like the committee or the staff member of the team to focus right now on that aspect of this evaluation plan. We cannot have that rounding up result occur next time.
I respectfully disagree because we no longer have a matrix necessarily. The difficulty was is that the formula the state used ended up with two areas on the four-point rubric. So you had a grid, oops, across the top was four, down the side was four, and so if you had a two and a three, adds up to five, divided by two is a two-point-five. It rounds up to a three, so your final summative rating was proficient. We don't have matrix, we don't have a grid, and we don't have formulas. It's more if-then statements. So if you have passed all five areas, then you are effective. If you have passed only four out of five as a veteran teacher, then you're deemed ineffective in an appraisal. So you can't round from four to five.
Okay, however you, I'll do it again, that slide. Curiously, if the administrators' evaluation were not there yet, there is in fact a numerical breakout of the scores that they achieved, which drives which are the four. So I'm like, based on what you said, I find it curious that there is one of those in the administrative space, which we'll get to next, and there's not in the teachers' evaluation, correct? Okay, all right.
Anyone have any other questions? Why?
Mr. Bird, I don't remember, you mentioned new teacher academy, and I don't remember reading about that anywhere. Can you tell me what that's about?
It's not in our plan, it's just a part of our process for onboarding new teachers. We just had it last year, last week actually, Tuesday and Wednesday, working with our instructional coaches and just discussing with the new teachers, I had a review session with our new teachers we hired last year in January, and they felt supported by their administrators, they felt supported by their teachers. But as we reflected on the process, we felt that we really didn't bring them into what we feel is the best way to instruct students, the Vernon way, if you will, based on our strategy for improvement, based on our knowledge as administrators on what good instruction is for our students. And knowing the region's teachers' programs, the universities, they're very good and we do get, you know, good teachers out of those programs, we hire very good teachers, but we just feel that there should be a next level, almost like an apprenticeship, if you will, because student teaching is relatively short timeframe. So we want to have another layer of support for our brand-new teachers. These are four teachers in their first or second year of teaching. We have hired teachers that were attended in other districts, they would not be a part of this because they've already, you know, they're five, six years, ten years into their tenureship of instruction. So we really want to focus on those folks, brand-new teaching. And we looked at the CCT, which is the Connecticut Competencies for Teaching, essentially. We looked at team, and we looked at the areas of weakness for our new teachers just through years and years of observation, and it boiled down to primarily classroom management to start out with. How do you deal with, you know, all sets of new kids, it's your first classroom, you know, as a student teacher, particularly while you're in someone else's classroom that has all of their rules and regulations set up. Well, how do you do that as a new teacher? How do you set up your classroom? How do you communicate your expectations for the verbally non-group? And so there's a number of elements associated with being a new teacher. We really feel that we want to support them in that process. As part of that, we did two days last week of discussing these things, of discussing these. We had four modules, essentially four lesson plans associated with each one of these pieces. And then moving forward, our next meeting date is September eleventh, and the process will be, we're going to do thirty minutes of sharing out, what did you learn? What have you learned in the past two weeks? What did you experience? And what difficulties and what things worked well? And just sort of that collaboration. There'll be a half an hour of new learning given by our instructional court coaches, by other teachers. We're going to try to incorporate from the district, from myself, from other administrators, give them some of that new learning experience, and then give them a half an hour to plan out collaboratively or individually on how they're going to implement that over the next month. We'll meet the following month, we'll do the same thing, thirty minutes. How did that go? What did you learn? What did you try? Was it successful? Was it not? Thirty minutes of new learning, thirty minutes of planning. So the plan is to do that in the classroom management, you can see domain one, do that for half a year. If you do look at our plan though, on page nine, you'll notice that the observation cycle for new teachers, in the first row there, it says at least three formal in-class observations and three informal observations, second sentence. The first and second formal and informal observations will focus only on the classroom environment domain and will be completed by their mid-year conference. So it doesn't say new teacher academy. So it doesn't say New Teacher Academy, but that's the intent of the New Teacher Academy, as well as the team program. So we're going to be focusing in on just the classroom management area. So what does that mean? We're going to be giving you support in the New Teacher Academy. Your team mentor's going to be giving you support through the team program. You're going to be reflecting on it through your reflection paper of the team program. And your administrator's going to talk to you about what are your strategies specific to the domains, domain one. And the, the nice part about the revised CCT rubric is that there's some very good language in there about how to engage students. Specifically, if you look across the rubric, it goes from below standards to exemplary. The language in, in proficient exemplary gives some very good starting points to administrators to say, "Okay, well, how are you going to try to get your, make sure that all of your students are engaged in the lesson?" Okay, this is what I'm going to try. The administrator observes that, very specific to that domain, and gives them very specific feedback. This is another thing we've learned over time, is that when you have targeted feedback and good coaching conversations with teachers, we will develop them as self-reflective practitioners, which is ultimately what we want. So, and then you can see the second half, you're going to move into the instructional domain or domain three on your cheat sheet there, as well as the team process. Second year, you continue, because we know instruction is so important. The first half of your second year continues instruction, so it's a full year construction essentially. And then mid-year, your second year, you switch over to the all three, to all four domains.
So the, so the New Teacher Academy monthly meetings last for a year, and then you took the second year?
We're, we're looking at two years, yes. This is our first year implementation, we do mark those two years.
Anybody else have any questions on the teacher evaluation plan? Anyone want to make a motion, Mrs. Byrden?
I would approve the plan with one amendment.
With the addition of the word Berman, oh, there's a second. Whoops.
Second.
Further discussion, comments? All those in favor? Thank you very much. At least I can maybe get work on that for a long time. Okay, we will move on to approval of the administrator's evaluation plan.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Fisher. We were very, I suppose, fortunate to be asked as one of seven districts in the state to be involved in recrafting an administrator evaluation plan. The, which is the second of the two plans that you have. The, what happened was, we had half of the committee working on recalibrating the rubrics. So the rubric in that plan is, has been changed. It's been, it's still based on the Common Core leading, the CCL. But the rubric is more explicit and provides examples. And there are actually documents that do provide more examples of what it would look like in practice to be exemplary or to be proficient on the rubric. Additionally, this committee, as I said, just the seven districts, worked with the University of Washington to involve instructional inquiry cycles into the evaluator plan. The inquiry cycles are kind of mini-cycles. We have just put in our plan a minimum of two, one in the spring and one in the fall. But the, the cycle would be that the administrator's evaluator would meet with the administrator, would discuss what the problem of learning was. It's so specific, let's say, to writing. The students are not writing and expanding their writing. They're just writing very quick things. They're, they're not going deep into their learning and expressing their thoughts. And so at that point, the administrator, the principal, would say, "All right, what is the problem of teaching that is associated with that problem of learning?" And so it's, what do the teachers need to know and be able to do in order to move the children to where they need to be? And then the principal reflects on, and what are my actions as a principal? What do I need to do in order to help my teachers help his students? So it's, it's not just made, waving the wand and saying, "We need to implement conferring or peer editing at the level." This is all about what I'm doing as an administrator. So those are the, the elements that we added in to this other, this second plan. The first plan that you have is identical to the one that we just had. It has not changed, and there are several reasons for that. One is that the national, the IST standards, the national standards are being revised right now. The state is reluctant to change their rubric at this point. And so we're hoping that they're going to be changed by this fall. That's the due date, we don't know, but the national leading standards are going to be changed. And so at this point, we're waiting for those to change and, and then to see how we can change our evaluation plan to be back to, to reflect that. So the evaluation administrator handbook, both of them have the same components, goal setting and planning, mid-year review, self-assessment, and end-of-year summative. They all have the same in terms of the three-two-one planning, so three student learning objectives, two focus areas, which are the practice areas, and one parent survey target. So that, that is part of the seed document, which is our administrator evaluation. It is also part of the guidelines for the State of Connecticut for Administrator Evaluation. So the first plan, unfortunately, has no change, but it still needs to be approved every year. That's new, we used to do it every 10 years. And now the state has changed their protocol. So we're asking that you approve that. The second plan, as you can see, is quite a bit thicker. That's the one that includes the inquiry cycles. They, the real difference between the two is that it does include those inquiry cycles and that the rubric is a little bit different. The seven districts involved in writing this plan were given permission by the State Department to adopt the plan in toto. So all of our administrators would certainly adopt the plan. That's not what we discussed. We, Mrs. Buhl, Mrs. Simon, and I, women three, representatives of Berman, who worked on this for multiple days, six or seven full days on the plan with the other six districts. And Mrs. Simon has volunteered to kind of be in the fishbowl. And so I will continue to evaluate her. Ms. Trantolo at Maple Street has also volunteered. So there are two administrators who are raring to go to work on these inquiry cycles, which is very, very exciting. And so we're, we're, we would like to continue to do that. And all the other administrators will continue in the old plan while they observe us. Mrs. Simon is going to be observing teachers as soon as school starts. We're going to be videotaping that, we're going to be videotaping her for conference afterwards, with my conference with her. So there's a lot of transparency to this work. And we're very excited and hoping to learn a lot so that we can revise the plan for the other 20 administrators for the following year. So at this point, we are, there are, some of the seven districts are doing the entire administrative team. And just going with the inquiry cycles for their entire, their entire district. As I said, the, the commissioner did approve this, but only for the seven districts. So we're asking for approval of both plans. The one that we did use this year, I will tell you, I did not find it exceptionally effective. It certainly doesn't stop you from having those deep conversations and making sure that we are growing. But I think that the inquiry cycle is going to give us a lot more opportunity for growth for the administrators. So we're, I'm very excited about piloting that this, this year with those two. So I would ask that we have, that both plans be, the, the first one is the one you approved last year. And the second one again is, includes the instructional inquiry cycles.
Any questions? I want to ask that if we are going with the same plan we had last year, approve that plan. That one is the one where you can round up. Is that correct?
Yes, it does round up. And it did.
The second plan?
And it did. The second plan as well, they are the same right now in terms of that. That was an area that we did not tackle. I don't think they're actually in here. Yes, they are, on pages 30 and 31 in the new plan, or 31, excuse me. They, they, we still have those, those grids. And so, yes, they do round up. They do round up. So we're, we're, again, we're working on the inquiry cycle here, trying to do that. There's, we're waiting for the state and for the national standards to change before there's anything really drastic. So we're, we're very pleased to do it, at least this much. And I would say ask to do that.
Through the pilot program, would you be able to make changes in how it is handled with the, the way the rubric rounds?
Not at this point. This, this was approved because it had to be approved by the state prior to it coming to the board. So the commissioner has approved the administrative evaluation with the inquiry cycles as it is right now.
But with your input, that's, it's a possibility that you could work to change that?
Right, and that, that would be our plan. We worked very hard on the teacher, that was actually wound up through the whole summer with the teachers, we've been working for six or seven months on that. And so I anticipate the same next summer with the administrators.
Thank you.
Not as fast as we want to be, but.
Mr. Byrden?
I'm stuck in a catch 22 here. I don't understand how I can possibly approve this. There's what I consider a major flaw in the, in the, in the document, which is the rounding up factor that I wanted pulled out of the teachers' evaluation. And you basically convinced me that this was done. So why would I want to go ahead and approve an administrator evaluation that has that same flaw? And, and yet you, you want something approved here this evening? And I just, I can't do it, I'd rather abstain and go, "No."
I understand that. There's, this, as I said, is, is the seed document, so it was the one developed by the state. It does definitely have the roundup factor, and, and we felt that this year. There were several instances where the rating came back to me and I, "Oh." And so I had to go back in and look deeper and deeper and see why that happened. And so I, I was not pleased with the way it went, both ways. And, but again, we're waiting for the national standards to be changed. The state is very reluctant to have us do anything drastic at this point. And as, as a district, we've not had the energy or the time to do that at all. So we, this does provide opportunity for growth, it provides opportunity for conversation. And, but you're right, it has, it has the roundup factor, there's no question.
I'd rather not approve this at all than put our seal of approval on something like that. Given that if everyone else feels the same way I do, that it shouldn't be there. I do, I'll ask this question, do we have to take any action at all?
The board does have to, this is your plan, you have to approve a plan. So we can certainly bring one back to you. I don't know what I could get approved by the commissioner, though.
Say that again?
I, we need it approved by the commissioner and the state department prior to board approval.
So before?
And so I, we would be starting at square one to do this. It would take us months and months of full-time work.
If I may, in terms of a waiver for our non-rounding-up matrix, if you will, it began in May. I went to Hartford at least twice for, you know, hour, two-hour-long meetings with various representatives on the phone weekly, various themes. This was a very lengthy, time-consuming, arduous process. And we provided a lot of documentation, we provided samples. And there's a lot of effort just to move this along. And it's really, in a sense, if I may, to do this, it was an uphill battle to get it approved. And being the lead on the committee to, to develop the administrator's one as well, we targeted our efforts on, on the teacher one because obviously there's more teachers, it has a direct impact on students. We know that administrators are important in influencing teachers and students. But we also heard that, that there was this pilot program coming through this, this group. We felt that as a committee, we would hold off on that until we got more information. So I envision that the, to go through the same process it could take us in through the new year to try to get a new plan approved for the state.
I, I appreciate the work that's been done going on and what the challenges have been. It still takes me back to the square one as well, not knowing how to proceed. So let me ask the chair, what do you, and what do you do there?
I mean, I agree with you that I don't like the rounding up, but I don't think we, we have to start the evaluation process of our employees. And I don't think we can wait until the state approves it, which might take until January. So I mean, that's just my end of right from first.
Right.
Through you to Mr. Bird. Since you already did this uphill down with the state regarding the teacher evaluation, haven't you already laid groundwork for that? Would be something new and drastic, would be my observation, unless you disagree.
I can't tell you what the policies are right now because the commissioners will be moving on. I think that's another factor in there. We have to wait for the election. I think there's a number of things that really, that were not an influencing factor starting back in May that I think will influence it starting now. So from our committee's recommendation, we would say, pass this, you know, good, bad, and ugly as it is, with the acknowledgement that we want better in Berman and that we're going to be moving forward with the pilot program and working with the state. I think the group that Dr. Conway and Simon Buhl are working with think will have the leverage to then move this out. So it's not just Berman, it'll be a larger group to, to move the system to make some more, that makes more sense.
And my second question, what if the board does not approve the plan, this evaluation seed, what happens?
My understanding is we have to take your advice, that's what you want us to do, make the revisions. And we have, we still have to send those back to the state to get their approval. And then we'd have to go back and forth until we get the plan approved. So that would be a very lengthy process for the state at this point.
I'm uncomfortable approving something that is not, in the opinion of a couple board members anyway, approvable, doesn't achieve what we want. So to, to approve something that we don't like, simply because we have to have something, doesn't seem right either. It's a rock and a hard place, but I would be hard-pressed to support it because it's going to be nothing.
I have a question, if, if it doesn't get approval tonight, can you continue to do some of this and evaluate the administrators and just do the scoring later? If we can, we're able to get the scoring changed?
I, I do, but the, there are six areas, so it wouldn't be the same formula, so to speak, as it is with teachers. There are, are six areas on the CCL that the Common Core are leading. There are six goals that I just told you about, three SLOs, two focus areas. And so now we're talking 12 areas. So there'd be a lot of mathematics that we'd have to figure out, what are those areas? So parent survey, target survey does not, does that equal one of the student learning objectives? And then we have to follow the guidelines. So certainly, you know, we will follow whatever the board wants us to do, and we will, we will do that. It was, more or less, the teacher evaluation plan was extremely important. The work by that committee this year was absolutely phenomenal. Very pleased that when the commissioner, I don't know how many meetings he had with our representative, three or four, and when he finally said, you know, "This is really good," we almost fell off our chairs. We had no idea if he was ever going to say that. So we were, we were very pleased. But it will take, it will take a year, and that's our plan, is to work through the year and write a new plan, et cetera. But we would, we would do that, we'd have to evaluate our administrators. We have no choice, and we would have to follow the state guidelines. So I'm not sure what that would look like. Seed is what we used last year, which is that first one, but that's the, the roundup.
Dr. Conway, I'd just like to, you, you had said very early on in your presentation of the two committees that you weren't really happy with the, with the evaluation plan of last year. There, it almost sounded like your hands were tied in a way because of almost an enforced evaluation. And I think this board recognizes that and doesn't want to have you in the position. And I think by us not approving this plan, we're backing that thought that what we have is not working and it has tied your hands too much. If we don't approve it and force it back, what kind of message does that, is there, is there any message about why we're not approving it? Does that get into the, the state's hands? Or is it only, is this only Berman that's concerned about this, this matrix and this rounding? Or is there, is there something that can really shed some light in Hartford that this is a big problem?
The rounding, I'm not sure how many districts are really concerned about the rounding, which amazes both Mr. Bird and myself. They, we can say, but, but everyone, everyone gets a trophy. They, we can say, but, but everyone, everyone gets a trophy. You know, this is just, everyone rounds up and everyone's perfect. And we have over 325 teachers and as Mr. Burton just said, so two-thirds of them are proficient and a third of them are exemplary. And we know there's room for growth in many of our teachers, in all of us. To have the numbers fall that way because of the rounding up does not make it a valid, a valid instrument. So, so we have no problems. We agree completely with the rounding up theory and would love to, would love to change it. And that's what we're hoping to start working on this year, a growth model using the inquiry cycles. It still does not change the rounding up, however. I was more concerned, we were more concerned at this point about, about the growth. And the seven districts, the other six districts and Vernon, we were concerned about how do we make this not a compliance model, but a growth model? And because we see it, see the seed model, which is your first plan here, as more of a compliance model. So that's where our concerns were. But we agree certainly with the rounding up because the entire administrative team fell into those two categories as well.
So if the current model and the pilot model does not meet what we think it should have in it, then we would be actually voting down if we chose to both the pilot and the current administrator evaluation model?
That would be up to you.
Are they, they're linked together is what I'm asking. When we make the approval, we are approving both of them, correct?
What are the other options?
The two, approve one or the other or both, right? It's up to you. Can I add one more?
Yes.
Thank you so much. The administrators know that the seed model has not changed the administrators' union and so they know that there were no changes made. Two administrators volunteered to leave that model and to go with the inquiry model here. And so if, if the board was, let's just say, to choose the inquiry model, which is more of a growth model, we would need to bring the administrators' union to the table to have that discussion. So certainly, because that's a bigger change than we anticipated. That's why we're only doing it with two people who volunteered, who stepped up to the plate to do that this year. But it's certainly doable and I don't think Mr. Burton and I are in any disagreement about the rounding up. We don't like that at all.
Can I ask it again, this is a lot I've said here. Can you upgrade with what we all agree is our flawed documents without our approval of the, this evening?
I honestly don't think we can. We need to have board approval for the plan. So if you're not going to approve this plan, then we will be working like crazy to get you a plan that you will approve. And in the meantime, the school year is starting. We've already started to meet, just to talk about SLOs, which are forcing both of these plans, and the school improvement plans and all of those things going forward. So we can't wait until November 1st to have a plan. Three months of the year are gone at that point. Evaluation is not summative, it's formative. It goes throughout the year. So, but we certainly, if that's the board's choice, then we will, we're gonna be, we're gonna have it tomorrow morning, it's up to them.
When we were discussing the teacher evaluation, you told us that we could make adjustments. That was the time to make adjustments before we approved it. Can we approve the administrator evaluation plan minus that matrix?
The adjustment that you made in the teachers was, was minor. It was not substantive. The adjustments you're talking about in these plans are very substantive and would have to go back through the commissioner's office and the Office of Talent Developers to get approved, anything substantive before and then came back to the board for approval again. So yes, you can say, we're not going to approve it without getting rid of the rounding up. And that would be that. And Mr. Burton and I would be working on the calculations at the end and how we could do that and what would be fair. We'd be working closely with the administrators' union to get that done and do that as quickly as possible. So that we could then get it to the commissioner so that we can then get it back to the board for approval.
Would it be a fair characterization to state that the administration feels this document is more of a work in progress that will, in the future, be able to be modified substantially to our liking and that we could, this evening, that it would allow you to move forward and to, I guess in the future, move forward on to the document in the future years?
Yes.
Is that truly what you're looking to do?
That's what we're looking for this year. Last year, we knew that when we passed, we asked the board to pass the two seed documents last year, they were not stellar by any means and they were placeholders. And throughout the entire school year, because the teachers was a more important document at that point, we worked very closely with the teacher evaluation team, the professional learning team, to change that document. Teachers put in a lot of hours with Mr. Burton and several administrators on changing that document and making it what it is today. It's good, it's a good plan now.
Now, if you were to take this document as a work in progress, how far is it, what it is, what you'd like to see? Is it just that one matrix or is there several other things, but again, those are relatively minor and you've worked on approving them over the years?
I think that the big thing is the, the matrix or the rounding up factor. That was one of the big things in our plan, in our teacher plan. The, of the essential elements are going to be there, the goal-setting conference, the number of goals that you must set, the types of goals, those are all part of the state guidelines. We can't change any of that. Adding the inquiry cycle, we're hoping that that's going to go very well this year and that the administrators will really think that's wonderful in terms of growth. And so we'd like to add that into the model for the following year as well. So, but the essential elements will be the same and it's at the end, the essential elements of the teacher model are the same in terms of you have four domains, it was five, but you have four domains. You have to be proficient in those four domains. You have student learning objectives, a student achievement. But instead of using those as pieces of a two-axis matrix, you are now using those as five components. That, yes, it's just, it's important. If you can't manage your classroom, that could be a deal breaker, especially for a veteran teacher.
Sure.
If you don't have instructional strategies, that's a deal breaker. If you don't have partnerships with family and community and communication with family, that's a deal breaker. If you can't plan your lessons, that's a deal breaker. And if you, and if your students don't achieve. And so we have truly changed the thinking around that. The state department was very leery of it to begin with and it took lots and lots of convincing and explanations again and again and again. And they, the comments were, this is really good. And so we are very, very pleased with that and would like to go down that road, but we have to involve our administrators in this conversation as well.
So since we're part of the work group, the, for this document, I would think that we would have the ability in the future to have that document a bit more than other comps that come in at later date, I would imagine, right?
I agree.
I think maybe, it's not a perfect document, but I think maybe we should move forward with it and kind of see if we can steer the course along its course of growth in the future. All right, I'll take a stab at the time to make a motion that the board approved. The administration evaluation plan 5.3 has written and trying to approve the document as comes in the future, being part of the review process.
Is there a second? Which, which document?
Were you, do you want to approve both documents or just the one on one?
I was going to go with the professional growth plan.
The inquiry one?
Right.
Is there a second? Yeah, there's no second. This is our. I might include that the administration revised the administrators' evaluation plan without the matrix rating system in both documents and report back to the board at our next meeting on the process, on the progress that you made. I get a second, I'd like to address that.
I just want to get that straight. You just want to revise the matrix in both, that's our revision at this time?
Yes.
Is there a second? No. All of those there?
Oh, that's, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
My thinking is if you can, Dr. Conway said that she and Mr. Burton will be addressing this at, starting at seven o'clock tomorrow morning. So if you can let us know where you are at in the process at our next board meeting, we can always elect to, if it, if it seems that it's just not going to work, then we can always revisit the motion. But I'd like to see you try to make it right.
Is this motion for both documents or just for?
Both documents.
Okay. Is that a question to Dr. Conway then? Is that something, because it is a piloted program, I know that they want consistency among the seven districts piloting it, is this something that we could do and still pilot?
I don't know the answer to that. I just know that the pilot program that we, it was quite an iterative process. There, as I said, the seven districts, there were around three representatives of the state department who sat there with us and still had to go through the process of getting approved through the commissioner and by many, many people. So I don't think it's going to be a quick turnaround, but that, that was approved as a pilot. So we may end up with just the seed document changing the, you know, changing the matrix.
Any other comments, Mr. Kim?
I guess I'm concerned, to what extent is this requirement on both of your time and focus? Is it, I guess the board wants to know if that presents an, it more than a challenge to your, your time and availability and schedule?
It will create an incredible amount of time for both Mr. Burton and myself, but also in connecting, and I know Mrs. Bitcher is here, who is the union president, and pulling together a committee of the administrators to work on this as well. So it will, it'll be very, very time-consuming.
And if you spent the time, there's no guarantee the state will approve it, is that right?
That's correct.
Would you say that it's very unlikely the state will approve it at this point by the next board meeting?
Oh, certainly not by the next board meeting. I will have some sense to be able to give you some feedback, I'm hoping, by the next board meeting, that we'll be able to talk to people at the state, explain what the issue is, give them some ideas on how it might work. And then we'll be able to get some, some feedback. But even with the seven districts working, we started on at the beginning of May, didn't finish till the end of July, and then it was, it was back and forth just about every day. I spent a week pulling together this particular pilot and going back and forth with the state and that was on a daily basis. And then we can, it was, oops, they need to do this, oops, you need to do this.
Chad, I don't really have a problem with Michelle's motion if, if we're going to accomplish something at the end of, by the next board meeting, but I don't think it will. You could spend all kinds of time and it would be no further along than it can be right now.
I, I do think that we'll know more from the state department about whether this is an insurmountable task or not.
You would?
But if we get in touch with people at the state and we can see them in the next two weeks, then we'll be able to provide you with some feedback about whether or not we should go forward with this.
I understand the reason and the rationale behind the motion. I do have the same concern that Dave just raised about the amount of time spent by our administration to try and come up with a solution that there's no way that the state will accept that. But it would be interesting to at least bring back to the state the fact that this board is not comfortable passing that seed program or the inquiry version, the growth program version with the matrix based on the fact that you're going to continually bucket people up and you're not going to get a true perspective regardless of which one of these documents we use. And I think just getting that message back to the state that this board is very opposed to doing that, did not want to approve this document tonight, and would like to hear feedback from the state, maybe rather than sending these two on a mission to try and put together something that is not going to pass that test. If the state says, well, if you propose the right thing, we'll approve it, then that's a different message back to us. But if they say that there's no way that that is going to happen, use whatever terms they may use, I think it's a message back to the board at least, it's this or nothing and this is our only choice. I just, I'd rather get the feedback rather than send these guys on a mission to do something. Mr. Burton, we definitely reference what we did with the teacher evaluation, the fact that that no longer has this. And I think maybe just bringing that conversation to the state and getting their response to this board, why we should approve this document as is with that major concern. Does that make any sense?
I think that our, my motion was trying to buy some time. We don't have to approve it this evening. It gives the administrators an opportunity to find out what they can find out. And in two weeks, we can undo what we've done this evening if that's what we choose. But I think to simply approve it and then send them off with a message puts no teeth in the message at all. So for the next several weeks, I'm sorry if it makes work, but that's what you do. And they, they contact the state and come back to us with information that makes it easier or, or not to approve the plan the way it's written. To me, it's just a postponement till we get information.
In other words, we'd like to table this current discussion and revisit it after we've gotten the information from the state, if this is something doable, instead of making a motion to, you know, change. And I, I think it would be better for the board to be able to revisit this again if we just table this motion and give them, give the administration instructions to go and investigate this. So I don't know if that would be a friendly amendment in that.
I think it doesn't send a very strong message, that's all, to Mr. Hoover's point. It sends a message that they're not willing to approve the plan the way it's written. And perhaps that's more helpful to the administrators than, than just deciding not to do anything about it now. Again, there to, it gives them the opportunity to say, our board will not approve this plan the way it is. What do we need to do to, to get it by you? And we haven't, it doesn't eliminate the opportunity to undo what we've done. We can always revisit based on the administrator's, administration's report at the next board meeting.
No further discussion on this one? Take a vote. Motion is.
To revise the plan.
To revise the plan without the matrix rating, report the documents and report the process made.
Is it supposed to get feedback from the state, is that fair? Or is that...
Not yet. Yeah, don't worry. Dr. Conway already said that that's what she would be doing, so my motion was simply to report back in two weeks on the progress.
Okay. All right. If that's said, all those in favor? More or less? The motion carries. We'll see where we are in two weeks and go from there. Thank you. Now we will move on to item 6.1, Carl Perkins' general business, Carl Perkins' grant application presentation.
Thank you. Actually, I think, do you need to introduce the... This is Nicole Elliott, our grant writer, and she prepared the Carl Perkins grant application this year, and she will be very happy to share information.
Thank you, Dr. Conway. I have a C Perkins grant application for the 2014, 2015 school year, and the board meeting, and that's the presentation on the contents of the grant application. So throughout the year, I work with Mr. Burton, Mr. Pusta, to work it on the core assets that we can use to improve the quality of our facilities at Rockville High School. Two of the biggest sources of this funding are the Sykes Foundation Grant and the Perkins Grant, they were received earlier. We work to make sure the departments involved have access to a fair amount of funding. We try to make sure that we are reaching as many students as possible with the clear college funding grants. So the Perkins Grant, it's, that's just the definition that came off of Perkins' website, but the main point of the definition is that career technical education is education that is related to making sure we follow the state standards and provide relevant technical knowledge and skills needed to prepare for further education careers in current or emerging professions. So this grant funds those kinds of courses. We work at Career Cluster Wheel from the state of Connecticut, and certainly grant funds specific clusters on the wheel that the state believes that we need to make sure students are prepared for. These subjects are agricultural education, business and finance education, property and work education, career-related consumer sciences, marketing education, medical careers, and technology education. So our grant application this year funds these five subjects. I just listed these departments and the areas of the wheel that they are aligned with. I worked with the department heads of these departments throughout the year to modify requests for last year and developing plans for next year. And in the budget that we've devised specifically, we have to, we have to list what departments associated with, and we have to show them that we're distributing it among the different pathways. So for our family consumer sciences, some of the grant funding is for professional development and for them to attend some conferences, including the American Association of Family Consumer Sciences, as well as the International Career Exploration Society. They take some continuing education courses through the Career Exploration Society, as well as other sources, including Manchester Community College. They take a lot of field trips to local businesses to give students an opportunity to get some observational experience. I know they go to the elementary master story school to give our childhood students that experience to see how that school works. They go to some restaurants for the culinary students are able to learn about, you know, our natural industrial kitchen. And we're also purchasing some new textbooks for the department. For our technology education, the grant has funded in the past, and we would like to continue to fund the aerospace components and manufacturers, future workforce opportunities, career fair. It's a good way for some of our manufacturing students to see their potential career opportunities. We also fund a film production field trip, and we've also purchased some equipment for the engineering instruction departments. The allied health department, the Perkins Grant funds some field trips for them. We also fund some trips through the Manchester Community College College Career Population Grant. They take some trips to Rockville Hospital down the street. They also visit Manchester Hospital and Manchester Community College, all as part of the College of Career readiness. They get some observable experience at the hospitals, and they are able to learn more about opportunities at Manchester Community College in the future. For our cultural education, it's some professional development and conferences. The teachers will attend the North East Trail Expo, as well as the Yukon Premier Old Plant Conference. They take a trip every year to the New York City Botanical Gardens in the Bronx Zoo. A lot of the funding is for developing their aquaculture curriculum and enhancing their greenhouse, which I believe is about 25 years old, so they need to upgrade it. A floral cooler is a big chunk of the grant for this year. They've had a floral cord that they have now, but also that they get out 25 years. They need it for some of their classes, which is floral training. We also have a teacher who's interested in potentially teaching cobblewood for the agricultural education department, so we included some funds for him to do some research into that. And the business computer science department, we actually, as we may recall, we pursued a large amount of funding from the Sykes Foundation to fund a new computer science lab at Rockville High School. We included funds in Perkins for the teacher Diane Dren to attend this conference. We also are funding the New York City Federal Reserve and Museum of Finance trip. A picture in the slide is actually a picture of the gold bars that you have to see in the vault at the Federal Reserve, which is pretty cool. We also funded new computers and monitors for a business classroom at the high school because the computers are about eight years old and programs they wanted to be working on. So that's a summary of the Perkins Grant application for this year, and I just wanted to say thank you for the support of these programs and ask you for other questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much for being able to do this. Okay. Item 6.2, updated voluntary directive action, civil rights complaint.
Thank you. Mr. Pulis is coming forward, and he works with Mr. Perkaro. And Mr. Pulis, you're going to be giving us a summary today, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for allowing me to do this. What I'm going to be explaining is a real, real high-level look at the Office of Civil Rights compliance review at the Rockville High School. All the items, all the items of the OCA, the Office of Civil Rights compliance review have been broken down into four categories. In order, in order from cost to low to high, we have housekeeping, maintenance, purchasing FFP, you know, furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and renovation and construction. We have addressed and continue to address the low-cost, no-cost items, which is basically the housekeeping items, so having, you know, the furniture in classrooms at a distance where a person in a wheelchair can get around. We are also in the process of receiving pricing for higher-cost items, and we'll be plus-funded either in the 1516 operating budget or the capital amount incurred during the term. I have contacted some of my colleagues around the state, who have also gone through these reviews, and the general consensus is, as long as we keep on working towards compliance, we'll be able to, you know, we won't get into trouble with the State Department of Education. I don't know if you have anything you want to add, Mr. Pulis.
Good, Chair. In addition to the update that Mr. Pulis has provided, there's a full update, more detailed item I have finding and update where we are, progress, where progress has been made, if the item has been completed, and if not, when we anticipate that that particular item should be completed. From a funding standpoint, just after one comment that Mr. Pulis had made, we've already started looking at potentially putting some of these into the local operating budget or into our capital amount occurring plan, six-year plan. Another option might be for us to also explore some reimbursement opportunities to the State Department of Education. So we're looking at all opportunities, local funding, state funding, that may be available to offset some of the costs of some of the higher-priced items, particularly in the category of purchasing furniture, fixtures, equipment, of course renovations and construction. So I think in summary, the items that we can do, we're doing. The items that are cost-reductive, we pushed off another fiscal year or two, and then some of the really larger items where we physically have to restructure school building in order to be in compliance, we push those farther downrange, and those who will be actively seeking long-term funding solutions for, possibly through the State Department of Education or construction services.
Do we have any questions? I do. How often do they come and review what we have?
What had happened is around 2008, they picked a half a dozen schools to do a, you know, do a review of, and they came up with the corrective action that needed to be done. And then the downturn of the economy happened, and it sort of gave those buildings, you know, Rockville High, even more, a retreat. And recently, in the last year or so, they've gotten to become more active again. So to answer your question, there is not a schedule.
And I find it interesting that it's a voluntary corrective action.
Voluntary means as long as we're working at it, they're not going to, we're not going to get in trouble.
And how long do you think it'll take you to determine how much these changes will cost?
I'm in the process right now. I contacted a few different contractors to give us budget pricing on the different items, such as the science throughout the school buildings, the addition of different eyewash and W stations in the science rooms. The replacement of the recessed water pumps to ADA compliant water pumps. So I would expect in the next month or so, we should have a very good idea of what the cost will be.
Well, I would ask that maybe when you do have it together, you come back and share that, please.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much.
This would provide you, thank you, Mrs. Fisher, with an agenda form that indicates the brief history. We have students who are not elementary school age, who are in Vernon Elementary School. And so, well, that was a great name to begin with. We do bridge the gap. We have middle schoolers in there as well, and it's just more appropriate for them to be there. We also have middle schoolers in our adult program. It depends on the child, the age, and where the appropriate placement for them would be. And so the school has come up with the name Loveland Hill School. We have many of our schools named after the streets they're on. And so Ms. Middleton is here. She did talk to her staff about it. It sounds like they have shared the questions for her. It sounds like they are very excited about this change.
I move that Board of Education approve the regaining of the Vernon Elementary School to Loveland Hill School.
Is there a second, Mr. Ken? Any discussion, comments, concerns? All those in favor? Yes. And item 6.2B, an update on the ad hoc committee that was formed until July 14. I'll ask then Mr. Lint to update us and see if he's turned it in.
Well, I was hoping to have, with the minutes ready, and hope there are any discussions on the next meeting, but apparently they'll be ready for next meeting, and we'll be able to discuss a little further detail. But my question to you is, can I ask you any of your questions? I'm going by memory from what happened last week. You wanted an update, I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Anything in particular, or just in general?
Thinking, who's on the committee? What's your agenda? What are you addressing?
I could forward you a whole agenda. Half of that agenda was brought back to us from Dr. Sell, who will be holding it in September. A lot of this homework, Dr. says she needs to bring to us so we can get this feeling a little bit more favorable to what the board is looking for. We have two parent volunteers, one of them is Charlie Charret, one of them is Scott Smith, both work at Eastern State University, both were very heavily involved in athletics at Vernon. Mr. Rocket, Dr. Sell, we have Mr. Kleinhead from Public Works at Vernon, and Steve Priestky from Vernon Park and Rock, as well as Andy Fisher and myself. It was about an hour and a half meeting that lasted from 4:30 to 7:30, so a long meeting. So we have a foundation board, but we barely got the forms up. We have a lot around the cover, to be honest with you, and it's not something that's going to get resolved, you know, Tuesday, Thursday meetings. Hopefully by December, we have a, you know, honest report available, and go from there.
The first meeting was just to find out where we were and where we wanted to try to go.
The agenda was very deep. We had a lot of, it was a very deep agenda, it was a lot of real estate cover. So maybe not even say it's true, you know, a lot of work.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? All right, now we'll move on to item 6.3, which is... Oh, sorry, 4.3. Which is Wayne Bass's request to...
I make motion that we go into executive session to discuss items 4.3, 6.3, 6.4, and 6.5, and do expect they'll take some type of action out of executive session. I ask that we invite Superintendent and...
Mrs. Beal's... Anyone else? Okay, is there... Second? Second? All those in favor?
Right, okay. We'll take that, and you see that thing moving, then you know it's recording, like it's recording us right now. it's recording us right now.
There they go.
And you know that our machine has resigned. Well, I haven't gotten the letter yet, but I think I have to get it. He only resigned.
Right, right, and Bill's gonna get, he's gonna get in on this letter. And that, well, I will tell you that, but...
Okay, you're back.
It's official. Our machine has officially resigned, sent a letter to Bernie Sturman in Denver, and the Democrats have picked Tom Sinema to be his replacement, and they've asked that the mayor put it on their agenda for the next town council meeting, which is, I'm not sure.
I think it's a week from tomorrow. Or no, it's only once a month.
It's once this month, the 15. No, there are Tuesday, 16. Right, aren't they first and third?
Yeah.
Yeah, then once during July, August, and then one, sixteen. So we have to wait until... Right, so those are those two meetings. Trish gave the package. So we have invited Tommy to come to our meetings as she like, and we are going to bring the package in at any time, so she can, you know, get a little bit up to do this as much as she can, so, assuming the town will approve of which I'm quite sure the town council will. All right, we are out of executive session, and we need a motion on the leave of absence. First teacher is Karen Kuper Schmidt, and she's looking for five days of unpaid leave to return on December 12.
Motion to the board to approve the request.
Superintendent, absent. There a second? Mrs. Bush?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Next. Lauren Gaudier is looking for the leave, parenting leave, for the rest of the year, starting January 5 through the end of the school year, which she'd like to return next year.
Motion to approve that request.
Second. Any discussion?
Can I just ask a clarifying question? It goes without saying that insurance is on her and all that stuff.
It's actually in their contract. She has to pay 100% of her insurance, but she's eligible to it because you're offering her right to come back, but she's eligible, I guess. Okay, any other questions? All right, all those in favor? Next. Christina Kopack is asking for a one-year unpaid leave. Is that Bush?
I move that we accept the one-year unpaid leave.
Is there a second?
A second?
I have to ask about insurance, not eligible for insurance. If you're offering her job coming back, she is eligible for purchase 100%. Okay, any other questions? All those in favor? Next. Do they last? Mrs. Deb Chase has requested the sick pay under the hardship article, Article 7C in the teacher's contract, and she's looking for sick time between, she will get 15 days as she comes back, or she'll get 15 days as of the school year, and then until December 31, 2014, through December 31, excuse me. She will only get sick time for the days that are working, working days. Right, right.
I'll just say so moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any one opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. And now, next item is ratification of the parent educator contract. Mrs. Fisher, may I ask, do you, does the board have a desire to grant superintendent authority to meet with her family to allow students to come back? It's entirely up to you, but it just, it might be a convenience or something, statute for which. Anyone?
I would make motion to allow the superintendent, on this particular case, the right to review and accept or deny the request, first and two.
Is there a second? Bush?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Pulis, you said in this case, that's really what this is, a one-time exception.
This is one-time, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Next. Now, the parent educator contract, sorry.
A motion that the board approve or ratify the contract for the parent educational planning their ratification in September 3.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Next. Now, we move on to item 7.0. Okay, 7.0, to review and update Board of Education calendar. Do we have anything for the calendar? All right, item 8.0, I continue for questions from the press. Is there one thing left?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor? Good? Next.
You could remember to bring back, or you could get to that September 4, September 8.
He wants the homework of the summer.
It's over now.
What's that? September 21st, 2:00 in the morning.
So are we doing the same thing this year, with the high school freshmen and the sixth graders coming in first, and then the next day the morning?
Very well.
That's a great idea.
Pre-6 and 9.
That's, oh, Wednesday, and then Thursday.
Thursday.
I think what I, what I'm hoping is this year, we start like at the beginning of the week. Like, our other people. I imagine that's coming with the crack calendar.
Oh, right, yes, all right. Yeah, I don't know how that works. Yeah, but it's a little bit...
Except it's in two different places.
The crack calendar, I don't know if they want it, they...
Yeah, but it's moving around, though.
Right, right.
So it won't be during nights, it's just a...
Don't put this card out.
Lucky you.
Okay. All right. No, I hope it's okay. So it's terrible. I told you I wanted it.
Whatever. I love to spend their money. How do we turn this thing on? Just it on?
It's the off button right here.